Okay. He blocked the screen when he came in, so I'm just waiting for it to pop up.
Okay. Do you want to do Pledge of Allegiance? Okay.
Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so tonight we're starting, this is the special regular slash the regular meeting of the Hollister City Council on October 6th. We're starting at 5:30 and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you lead us, Vice Mayor, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course.
Mayor Stevens, do you want to call roll really quick?
Should we do that first and then?
Yes. Okay, so Vice Mayor Pache.
Present.
Councilmember Resendus.
Present.
Councilmember Deanda.
Here.
And Mayor Stevens.
Here.
And Councilmember Morales is not present.
Okay, okay, now let's see.
Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands before me, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to start with closed session. So City Attorney, do you want to read what the closed session items are, please?
Yes, Mayor. 3.1, closed session pursuant to government code section 54957, public employee appointment[371.91][371.91]/ employment title city manager. 3.2, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency designated representatives, interim city manager Jim Pea and city attorney Mary Lerner, employee organizations, service employees International Union SEIU Local 521, Hollister Firefighters Union HFFU, Hollister Peace Officer Association HPOA, and unrepresented employees. 3.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.91, Precision Grade Inc., the city of Hollister, city of Hollister v Precision Grade Inc. and Industry Insurance Company, case number CU 2400290. 3.4, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9 of the government code one case.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to go into closed session. Oh, let me just check in. Any questions, any pub, oh, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, so we're going to go into closed session now. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you, City Clerk. So we're back from closed session. I'm going to check in with our city attorney. Anything to report out?
No, there's nothing to report from closed session this evening, and there was nothing to report from the September 15, 2025 meeting as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to go into public input. So this is a time set aside for the audience, both virtual and in person, to give a public comment, to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city but not on the agenda for tonight. So speaker cards are available in the lobby for those of you here. Make sure you get those to our clerk as soon as possible. And then when you come to the podium, say your name, what city you're from for the record, and then speak to your matter. If you're on Zoom, then just raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're on Zoom on your cell phone, press the asterisk and then the nine, and, and then do the same. There is a maximum limit of three minutes per subject matter and a maximum 30 minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes per comment and 30 minutes per subject matter. So please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or talking about any, or taking any action on any item that's not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor Stevens, there are no speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So we're going to move into the consent agenda. Any members of the council have, have any brief questions or comments on the consent items? Okay, not seen any. Can we go to public comment? Any public comments from anything on the consent agenda? Okay.
There are no public comments for the consent agenda items.
Okay, so can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, no opposition, so it passed five to one, five to zero. So let's move then on to our public hearing, 8.1. An ordinance amending the City of Hollister zoning map rezoning for future annexation of the property located at 1285 McCray Street, APN 020-100-014 into the general commercial zoning district. Can we get a staff report, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Eva Kelly, your Planning Manager with Community Development Department. This item, as the mayor mentioned, is a pre-zoning ordinance, 2025-3, for the future annexation of the parcel located at 1285 McCray Street, which currently contains the existing Toro Petroleum gas station. This is a slide with the location. The APN of the parcel is 020-100-014, and the proposed pre-zoning for this item is to the general commercial zoning district. This is currently a county island within the city. It's fully surrounded by the city on all four sides. And this was initiated based off of the city council's authorization to sell the adjacent surplus land. So you can see to the left, there's the adjacent surplus property at the southern end of McCray and Prospect that was being sold by the city on October 15th of, oh, I should say, 2024. The city entered into an agreement for the sale of that surplus land, and it is being sold to the property owner of the subject property at 1285 McCray. And part of the term of the sale is that they would annex their county island into the city in exchange for the surplus island, or the surplus property. So the council authorized the initiation of this pre-zone on August 18th. And then on August 28th, the Planning Commission heard this item, and they did adopt Resolution 2025-2021, recommending approval of the pre-zone to the council tonight. The property is currently served by a city water and soup, and a septic tank. It's noted that annexation does not require an immediate connection to the sewer, but the annexation would facilitate future connection to the sewer as it's necessary if they wanted to connect, or if their septic tank failed and they needed to connect. They wouldn't have to go through this annexation process to facilitate that connection. They would already be in the city limits. It will be served by our police and fire services as well. On August 4th, the city council did adopt a temporary annexation policy related to our 2040 general plan update, which states that no new annexation or general plan amendments are allowed, but they did carve out an exception for this property because of the surplus agreement, the land sale. And so this was found in review with our 2040 general plan update to not affect that project. And so the council agreed to allow this to move forward ahead of that project. This project, because it has an existing facility and no development is proposed, no modifications to the site are proposed, it is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which is an existing facilities section of the CEQA guidelines. And this is a brief overview of the annexation process. We are currently about in the middle of the process, which is a first hearing or an introduction and first reading of the pre-zoning ordinance, which is a zoning map amendment. If approved tonight by the council, we'll follow up with a second reading to adopt the pre-zoning ordinance as well as step seven, which would be a resolution authorizing us to submit to LAFCO, who is the ultimate approving body for the jurisdictional boundary change. Following that, we would apply to LAFCO, and LAFCO would be the ultimate. Following that, we would apply to LAFCO, and LAFCO would be the ultimate decision on the annexation. And then that would get filed with LAFCO, and then it would become annexed into the city after that. And with that, you've been short and sweet. I am recommending to you to hold a public hearing to introduce the ordinance amending the zoning map, which was attached for your information, and then to schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next council meeting on October twentieth. You can answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate that. Any questions from Ms. Kelly? Comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start the public hearing. So we'll start the public hearing right now at six thirty-nine.
And Mayor Stevens, there are no public speakers for the public hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing, the public hearing, and move.
Mayor Stevens, we just have someone raise their hand just now.
Oh, okay, sorry about, okay, so I'm going to reopen it, and then we will close it again.
Okay, it's Edmund Scanduli. Okay, you can go ahead and then.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. And I see the, the, some, some stranger things on, on, on a town. The, the bumpers on the, on the road, I don't know who put them in there, and I don't know who approved that. Because I've been asking all, all coworkers, all my friends and all neighbors, everybody is like, they don't want them in there. But they're there. So I don't know who approved that, you know, to, to, to put the bumpers on, on, on the road.
Can I just ask you to pause the time really quick? Let me just check with the speaker. First of all, sir, can you just state your name and your city for the record, please?
Edmund Scanduli, Hollister, California.
And Mayor, if we could clarify that he's actually speaking to this agenda item?
And, and sir, are you speaking on the, on the annexation of the property that Ms. Kelly just presented on?
No, no, this is like a general thing that I don't start about.
Hold your comment?
Yeah.
Then, so we're going to have to hold your comment until that item comes up that you're speaking about.
Okay.
Okay, okay, sorry about that. Just.
Sounds good.
Take your, yeah, maybe you can come back.
Mr. Scanduli, which item was it for? Which, which agenda item were you wanting to speak to?
If it was for public comment, the public comment will be available at the next meeting.
So, do you want to, can you unmute really quick?
Yeah.
Okay, which item were you wanting to speak on, or was an item on the agenda?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, so the public comment period closed earlier in the meeting, so if you'd like, you can speak at the next council meeting, which is on October twentieth, and the public comment is right at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
And just as a quick little FYI, you are also welcome to reach out to any members of the council on this as well, sir. Thank you. Any other comments, City Clerk? No other, no other comments? Okay. So now I'm going to close the public hearing again, and then check in with the council. Are we doing, do we need a motion for this item?
You do. We need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, so can I get a motion from members of the council?
I motion to adopt the ordinance amending the city of Hollister zoning map pre-zoning for future annexation of the property located at twelve eighty-five McCray Street into the general commercial zoning district.
And can I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, no. So the vote is five zero. Thank you for that. So we're going to move on to the next item. Eight point two, amendments to the zoning ordinance amending language in the zoning ordinance related to legislative updates, use matrix, and definition. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Me again, Eva with the Planning Department. This is zoning ordinance amendment twenty twenty-five dash three. That's being recommended, initiated by staff and the Planning Commission as part of our overall zoning update and cleanup that we're working through. This is part of our cleanup that we've talked through for the last few years with the council, and we've been slowly working on ordinance updates as the Planning Division to try to clarify and clean up our zoning ordinance, which has a lot of confusing parts and inconsistencies. And so we have created a webpage about the zoning ordinance overhaul that we've posted to the planning website so that we can kind of keep the public informed of this. And the proposed phases for a reminder for the council are Phase One, which is ongoing, but that's edits to the zoning ordinance as state laws continue to be updated. We've done a few in the recent years updating our ADU ordinance, our SB nine ordinance, density bonus ordinance, and as the state continues to adopt new laws once or twice a year, we will continue to have to keep updating those sections. And then this is Phase Two, which has kind of been split out, but we are proposing some edits to our use tables and definitions tonight, and some minor clarifications for state law to really clarify those use tables. So I'll go over those briefly, but happy to answer any questions. Following this, and we've already started working on this, Phase Three, where we're looking at overhauling our entire permitting requirement sections to really clean up the processing, make sure each different application type has a clear process, a clear code section, no inconsistencies in the code. And then Phase Four is the big one, which is everything else in the zoning ordinance, all our design reviews and those types of things that will likely follow our general plan updates so that the zoning ordinance becomes consistent with the new general plan. So a long-term project, but right now we're on Phase Two. This item was reviewed by the Planning Commission first in June at a study session, and then we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission on August twenty-eighth, where they did adopt a Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, recommending the city council's approval of the ordinance as proposed tonight. So to go briefly over what we're proposing to edit, first is our SB nine two unit development chapter. The state recently adopted a change to the accessory dwelling unit government code section, and they kind of changed the entire code from the previous section, which I believe was like six five, six nine two, and they changed it to the six six three one three. So we are proposing to change our ordinance to correct the government code reference. We are also updating our density bonus law in accordance with some new amendments. There's a series of laws here, but one of the bigger ones is a change to the one hundred percent affordable percentage. So we're just updating to be consistent with the newest laws in density bonus, our density bonus ordinance that we adopted, I think, last year. One of the big land use changes that we're proposing for our use tables is to update in accordance with religious assembly laws. We currently don't have a consistent religious assembly versus secular, non-secular assembly. So we're proposing to update that to be consistent with First Amendment regulations for treating assembly, both secular and non-secular, the same. So that's a proposed update for our code. That's something that's been missing. We are also adding a few other state law uses, mostly related to things like supportive housing. Those types, there's a few definitions, but it's like supportive housing, transitional housing definitions that we were missing and uses that we were missing from our tables. So we're adding in those uses into our tables where they're currently permitted because of state law. We're putting the actual language into our code. We are also updating, or we're proposing to eliminate all of our current chapters of use tables and update them so that they are consistent. We aren't proposing too many true changes, but we're proposing the stylized difference and a consistency across all of our different zoning ordinances so that the use tables reflect a use that has a definition, and it tells you what zoning that it's allowed in. We currently have a lot of issues because we have a lot of things in the use table that don't have a definition, definitions that aren't referenced at all in the code, so we're unclear why those are there. Doing some consolidation and cleanup. That's really the purpose of this, is to make what our current code says clear. We are recommending removal of the SNA, which is our Site and Architecture Review Permit, from the use tables. Use tables are supposed to be for permitted uses or conditionally permitted uses. Site and Architecture Review is separate and dependent on the scope of work. It's a design review requirement. So you might be a permitted use, but proposing a change to a building that requires design review, they're really separate things. The use tables are about permission to be there, or do you need a conditional use permit to be there? If you're not proposing any changes to the outside of the building, you probably don't need design review. So cleaning that up out of our use table, we have design review requirements in chapters already. To go briefly over every single table that we're changing, we are changing the residential use change, uh, use table, which is seventeen oh four oh two oh. We are adding transitional housing, community care facilities required by state law, supportive housing, family daycares are being amended to reflect state law, which means that we cannot require any permits for family daycares. Those are your home daycares. And then, again, cleaning up use names for consistency with definitions, eliminating a lot of unnecessary notes at the end of all these tables as well. Our home office section currently does not have a use table. It just lists the allowed uses in bullet points in that chapter. So we're proposing to put that into the format of a use table for the home office zoning district to be consistent with the other chapters. And so when you look at one zoning district from another, you're reading them the same way. Commercial and mixed uses, again, repeal and replace, clarifying our table. We have a lot of uses that don't have definitions, so we're making sure that that's clear, but we're also consolidating some things. We have some definitions where, you know, a lot of different types of retail will be listed out as seven different types of retail. We can consolidate that into one type of retail. We don't need something for, you know, woodworking, retail, and all these different types of things. We're proposing a lot of consolidation there and clarification. We are proposing a few, a few different uses to be added in that don't currently exist, and anything that we've added, we added a, a definition as well to the definitions chapter so that everything has a definition to refer back to. So tasting rooms is something we're proposing as a permitted use in some of our commercial mixed-use zones. We are adding emergency shelters required by state law, proposing adding bail bonds as a use with a definition, something that's missing from our current code, so it doesn't really have a place in the city. And again, deleting a lot of unnecessary notes that are inconsistent with other chapters. Industrial uses, same thing, clarifying the use tables, adding emergency shelters, which is required by state law to be in your code, removing some redundancies. And one of the things that we've updated both for industrial and for commercial is some definitions to our commercial recreation, to clarify indoor major, indoor minor, and outdoor commercial recreation and proposed uses for those. That would be your kind of jump room, big gyms, batting cages. We get a lot of random inquiries for things like that, shooting ranges, not clear definitions now. So we're proposing some clear definitions and categories that we think will be helpful for both staff and applicants to understand where these are permitted. And again, deleting unnecessary notes. For the airport zone districts, we are doing a lot of redundancy cleanup, and we've also looked at a lot of uses that are currently at our airport that didn't have definitions or weren't allowed. And we're proposing to merge those two and add some definitions and add some airport-related uses into this table so that they're allowed. And deleting notes. Open space park and public facilities, same thing, updating for consistency with the other use tables and deleting any unnecessary notes that are covered in other sections. The other big chapter that we're proposing is to repeal the existing section, which is seventeen oh two oh two oh. Replace it with its own chapter definitions, and every term gets its own section, so it's really easy and clear to see which definition, they're alphabetical, but we also could add definitions in the future, easily amend just a section of the code if we need to update a definition in the future. So we think that this will be a lot easier for staff and the public to use. And every single term that's in our use tables will have an affiliated definition now. So we've done a lot of updates to definitions, additions of new definitions, consolidation, to make everything consistent and usable. In addition, so that's the main bulk, is some state law and big use table definitions cleanup. But staff and the Planning Commission are recommending a few changes to the code. One of our changes that we're recommending is to this section seventeen twenty-four oh seven OD, which is our current project notification signage requirements. These signage requirements were placed into the code, and they're very restrictive, and we've found over the years that these signs, these are your big thirty-two square foot signs that get placed on the project site and have the description of the project. We found that they're, they're very wordy and difficult to read. They don't portray the information, so we're proposing to remove this and simplify it. And staff has proposed some guidelines, really with the opportunity for visuals, some flexibility dependent upon the project, and something that can be a little bit easier to update as we see so that we're making sure those notification signs are actually helpful to the public if they drive by these properties. So we're proposing a change to this section to help facilitate that. In our mixed-use districts, staff and the Planning Commission are also proposing a change. We currently don't require mixed use in our mixed-use districts, so sometimes you'll see a hundred percent commercial, sometimes you'll see a hundred percent residential. And one of the concerns that we're seeing is not being able to meet our housing requirements, but also not being able to fulfill the intention of those mixed-use districts. So we are proposing to add into our zoning ordinance a requirement for housing and commercial, and an indication that makes uses for mixed use so that we can move forward and see projects meet those requirements. I will say that with the housing laws, there are going to be some times where they might qualify for an exception and exemption from commercial, but we think that this will help us both meet our housing requirements and the intention of the mixed use a lot better than we are currently. That's the bulk of it. This is CEQA exempt under Section fifteen three seventy-eight. And just in conclusion, we're really looking to do clarity. Our use tables have been a big problem for us, especially the lack of definitions. You know, you look at a use table when someone comes to the counter and proposes a, a project or a business in a specific place, and it's difficult to figure out where it fits in. And then sometimes where, you know, between this one and this one, and then we look at a definition, neither is defined, so it's difficult for us to help people. So we're trying to, everything in the use table clearly says what type of permit it is, and everything in the use table is defined so we can match these business proposals and these use proposals by the public to where they're allowed in the city. So we really think it's going to be clarifying and very assistive to staff and the public to make it a lot more user-friendly to use our code. I think that's all I've got. So we are recommending to hold a public hearing and introduce this ordinance, and this Planning Commission has reviewed and is recommending approval as well.
Thank you for that, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate it. Very thorough presentation. Thanks. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Sanders, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. So for the mixed use, you had alluded that there are some exceptions. Can you, I'm assuming, like, one of them might be like a hundred percent affordable housing.
Yeah, it's mostly going to be.
Examples of that.
It's mostly going to be related to affordable housing, density bonus law. They could potentially do and, and request a density bonus incentive to eliminate that requirement. I believe there's also another law that I think it actually is just density bonus law that I'm thinking of, that, that it specifically says that's one of the things that they could request as an incentive. So you're going to be looking at qualifying affordable housing projects where they're providing enough affordable housing to where they can request an incentive, and then that would have to be a specific request that they make. So they might request a different incentive. I will say a lot of, a lot of what we hear from the development community and what we hear from other communities who are trying to implement affordable housing is that that can be a constraint on the development community. But we also are not requiring it to be, you know, specifically designed as like ground floor. We could do separate what we call horizontal mixed use. So there's still flexibility because we don't have a lot of requirements, but this would at least. But this would, at least as a baseline, have a requirement for mixed use, which is something we currently don't have.
Anything else? Questions? Questions on this side? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just have a comment. Great work. It really, anything that can create more clarity for, you know, citizens and users, it just seems like streamlined. So I think it's great that you guys are doing this. It's a good use of time and keep it up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. Much needed. I, I think the public will all appreciate updates and anything we can do to make it, make it easier, and then we can tackle some of the other challenges in that, in that area. But this is, I know it's gonna be a, a big project, but greatly needed and appreciated. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing now at six fifty-nine.
And there are no speakers for this item.
Okay. So I'm gonna close it at six fifty-nine and then check in with the dice. And any other comments or questions, or can I get a motion?
I motion to adopt agenda item eight point two amendments to the zoning ordinance, amending language in the zoning ordinance related to legislative updates, use matrix and definitions.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, no oppositions. Okay, so-
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate that. Okay, so let's go on to committee assignments. Any council member have a report on any committees? That they, any committee, committee meetings they participated in? Do I have any on this side?
Not committee, but I'll give a brief information.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Sendus.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, I believe on that day, it was the day that Mary Encinas, a teacher that did a lot of community service here, was actually a school board member as well. I requested that we close in her honor at the end of the meeting. And we had a closed session at the end of the meeting, so it wasn't done publicly. But I just wanna let the public know that, and it's on the minutes, that the council closed in her honor. And then the mayor, myself, and County Board Supervisor Velazquez went over to the family to let them know that about a week ago or so. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Or else, okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead. You don't have anything? Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, and, and just, yeah, this is an FYI, just to piggyback on Councilmember Sendus. We met with the family. They were very appreciative, very humbled and honored that we did that. And then I was able to, again, I went to, I went to the, to the service briefly and, and also expressed a gratitude for all the work that Mary Encinas did for the, especially the kids in this community. And so it's greatly appreciated. And the family just asked, I passed that along to all the council members and to our city manager and staff about how honored they felt with that. And then the other thing that I will report on is we had fire advisory committee last week. We officially started the contract for the feasibility study, the district feasibility study. So that, that work had already started, but we just, it was official. We, we finally like officially started the contract and the work. And that will be ongoing. We'll get an update from them in a couple of months. We also agreed to meet quarterly, and so we will be moving that meeting to quarterly and then adding special meetings as needed. And so that's, that, that will be coming up. And then another thing that we talked about was possibility of tapping into some dollars that might be available for, like, after a response to like an accident or some other response from fire that we can invoice the insurance companies. So we had a conversation about that. So, I mean, for those of us who remember last meeting, the, our police chief talked to us about something similar here for situations where crime was involved and was, and we had the police responding to that, and that incurred some city costs and where we may then try to, try to collect some of the, those costs back. And so we want, we're thinking about doing something similar for fire. However, this would be primarily for insurance-related incidences. More to come on that, because we did decide to table that item and focus on the feasibility study. So more to come on that. And that's all I have to report. Okay, so I, I'm gonna move on to city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a, a few brief items. In addition to your welcome and meeting with many staff members and hitting the ground running, we're trying to make it as seamless as possible, so I wanna thank you and staff for that. And David, the former city manager is a big loss, but we are moving forward. So that's one item. Second item, I wanted to let you know that staff and myself, I've walked the San Manito Hollister School District grounds with Superintendent Sean Tenenbaum, talking about road safety and crosswalks and more lit crosswalks potentially coming. And so I'm getting, I got up to speed on that. There's more to that, but I appreciate the school district's efforts in this and our public works' efforts going forward. And I wanted you to be aware of that. We have a new employee, Javier Hernandez. Are you out there? And a city engineer started today, and I always want you to know when we have a new employee, because it doesn't happen often. So we had a new city engineer start today. We're going to the cloud in December, January, so I want, it's a big effort by our IT staff. So Sean and team, thank you. And then the last item is probably the biggest item in terms of your awareness, but from the chief of fire, Jonathan, October is fire prevention month. So we're in it. And in recognition of that, Hollister is celebrating a hundred and fifty years as a department. On October eighteenth, it's the actual anniversary is in December, but on October eighteenth, we'll be celebrating, beginning with a parade from Dunn Park to Fire Station One at two PM, followed by a brief ceremony at three and an open house until six. So there will be a parade and a bounce house for kids and food trucks, and you're all invited. And I wanted to get that date in front of you as it's twelve days away. That's all I have, Mayor and council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, city manager. Okay, any last minute thoughts or reports about any other committees before we adjourn? Go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Yeah, just as a friendly reminder, I'll be attending the California League of Cities from Wednesday to Friday.
Yes, thank you for that. Yeah, and then we will look forward to a report on that. Yeah, or a summary of what happened over. There's a lot of stuff happening, and I'm really sad that I'm not able to go, but I will be going to a Lafco conference ten days later. So, yeah, so I'm glad that you'll be at that one. Okay. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn. So we're gonna adjourn probably the earliest ever meeting at seven oh seven PM. Thank you, staff.